I call this meeting of the Town of Pintop Lakeside Council to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. God, Holy One, Mighty One, we come before you this evening with hearts full of thanksgiving. We thank you for the snowfall that fell yesterday and quenched our dry land. We ask that you would continue to provide the much-needed moisture. We thank you for our first responders. Protect them, keep them safe from all harm. And tonight, we remember our medical personnel who worked so diligently under difficult circumstances. We ask your protection over them. And we remember those many people who helped make our cities run. Lastly, we give you thanks for these city council members who sit before us this evening, and we thank you for these young people, our future leaders. We recognize that our council members work long hours with the interests of their constituents foremost in their minds. Please give them wisdom and discernment as they govern and make decisions. Give us ears to listen well and help our words to be clear, concise, and carrying tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Deanne for that great invocation. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up to call to the public is limited by the opening meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public. Individuals are limited to three minutes. And I have one request for call to the public by Lynn Krigbaum.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not sure how to address our mayor and council, but we are all here anyway. And I think it's so wonderful. I have something that's not quite exactly what you would expect, but because I was a science teacher, I have always been involved in science fairs. We have a regional science fair coming up March 5th in Snowplague at the NPC Performing Arts Center. We need judges. So if you know anyone who would like to be a judge, you can Google Northeast Regional Science Fair, and that will plug you into how you become a judge. And there is training. So it begins at nine o'clock on Saturday, March 5th. And I hope that you all have had good science experiences in the past and perhaps will continue that. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you Lynn Krigbaum. And one thing I forgot to mention, my name is Landon Rigg, and I am a senior in high school, and I am the chairman of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. I am acting in behalf of Mayor Erwin for tonight.
And I'm Quinton Lawler. I'm also a senior at Blue Ridge, and I am the vice chairman of the Mayor's Youth Advisor Committee, and I'm acting on behalf of Vice Mayor Smith.
And I'm Morgan Eddy. I'm a freshman at Blue Ridge, and I am a mayor of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, and I am acting on behalf of Councilmember Watson.
I am Parker Rigg. I am a council member on Mayak and a junior in high school. I am acting on behalf of Councilmember Snitzer.
Hello, my name is Shayla Grzelik. I'm a senior at Blue Ridge High School. I'm a secretary on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, and here acting on behalf of Councilmember Buse.
I am Grace Smithson. I am a freshman at Blue Ridge Junior High. I am treasurer for Mayak.
I am River Rigg. I'm a freshman at Blue Ridge, and I am the historian for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, and I am here on behalf of Councilmember Krigbaum.
Thank you, and sorry for doing things a little out of order. Item C of the consent agenda, all items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for the discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda are considered in their normal sequence as listed on the agenda unless called out of sequence. There are three items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
For Vice Mayor Smith, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion for Councilmember Buse.
It has been motioned and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item. After the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff, any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Our first item is item D1, Presentation of the Voice of Democracy. Mr. John Beeler will be present.
Good evening. Good evening. Youngest council I've ever seen. I've been every forty-two years. Yeah, I think they're all, everybody's younger than me. Anyway, I'm the chairman for Voice of Democracy for Blue Ridge High School, Patriots Penn and Junior High, and Teacher of the Year, and some other things. So tonight, we're going to switch around a little bit. I, George, this is George Baum, so stand up, George. He's our commander, and he's gonna do the talking, and I'm gonna pass him out tonight. So I'll get a chance to pass him out, which I've never done in, I think, eighteen years, something like that, so. But we appreciate the new council, which is something that, you know, I know and don't wanna know me. All right, George.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and council for having us here tonight. I'll give you a real quick synopsis of what the Voice of Democracy program is. It's a national program put on by the veterans of foreign wars, and every year they come up with a topic, and this goes to the high school students, and they had to do, I think it's three to five-minute essay kind of a thing, and to put it on a CD, and then the judges listen off the CD to the essay. And the time limit is good. You go over a second, and next year you have to apply again. So anyhow, John did say that this is his first time handing them out, and I just said to him, put it on him, and said, you know, John, you do this. You should hand out the certificates, and I'll just call the names. You did all the work. You can get the say-so and given out the awards. So no further ado, we'd like to start off with a first, a fourth-place certificate and a check for twenty-five dollars to Lucy Flake. Another fourth place would be to Dakota, and I hope I say this right, Steeh, S-T-E-A-H. Was I right on that, Steeh?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Another fourth place would go to Kaytera Steeh. Another fourth place to Allison Blumstrand. And the last fourth place goes to William Alofthaus. A third place to Shay Baron, I'm sorry, Berenheim. And she gets a certificate and a check for fifty dollars. Second place to Alexis Spinner, and she gets a certificate and a check for seventy-five dollars. And first place for here in Pintop Lakeside goes to Leia Dorm, and she gets a plaque and a check for a hundred dollars. And then also, being that she was our first place, we submitted her to our district, and our district named her second place. So she gets a certificate and another check for seventy-five dollars. One of the hardest jobs, I think, in this whole thing is judging it. You got all these, sometimes a hundred students, you have to listen to all these and come out with the top ones, and that's the hardest. So we'd also like to recognize the judges tonight. We have Jill Atkins. Is it Atkins? I'm sorry. I have a certificate for you. And Heath Johnson. And Betsy Peck. And the person that makes this whole thing possible is the teacher from Blue Ridge High. Is it Jessie Reed? Is that how you say that? I hope I said it right. Okay, let's give her a round of applause. This would have happened, she coordinated the whole thing at the school for us, so she gets a lot of credit. And again, thank you for having us here.
Thank you again, council.
Thank you, Mr. Beeler, and congratulations to all the Voice of Democracy winners. Are there any questions or comments? Item D2 is Presentation of the Trax 2021 Annual Report. Councilmember Lynn Krigbaum will be present.
Good evening again. Not only did I do science, I loved to hike, and I build trails. I'm with the Trax organization, and we moved up here full-time twenty-five years ago. Jack Barker was our neighbor, and he said, "You should find out about tracks." So we went to the first meeting twenty-four years ago and started working on trails that April, and I've been doing it ever since, April to November. We work every Monday morning for three hours, sometimes two and a half, sometimes three and a half, but anyway, it's always fun, and it's all outside. Councilmember Snitzer knows very well what we do. He was our past president, is our past president, and he brings the trailer every week. And we work with the Forest Service, and we have a crew of usually eight to maybe twenty people, and it's a lot of fun. So when you're not in school on Monday, perhaps you'd like to try it too. The reason that I'm here to give the report is that all of the council members have already had it in their packet, so I'm not going to read it, but I do want to bring attention to the fact that the trail crew worked two thousand and thirty-seven hours this past year. And there is a group that values volunteers' time at twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents an hour, so that amount of time is worth fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So we're not just having fun, we're doing a good thing for the town. We have two hundred miles out there of trails. I'm wondering if you've had a chance to hike some of our trails, or right now, cross-country ski, that's what I do, horseback riding, bicycling. We have photographers, bird watching. Our trails are wonderful. So two hundred miles, and we have every quarter of a mile a special diamond. It has a letter and a number on it. It tells you what trail and how far you have gone. But if you needed help, you could call 911 and give them the code of the diamond where you are. Suppose you twisted your ankle or something like that, and you need help. All of those emergency responder people know exactly where you are when you tell them the code, and they can find you. If you needed a helicopter, most of the places can, you can do a helicopter rescue. So that's pretty dire, you know, if you needed something like that. But it's another good thing about it is when you're out there hiking, you know that when you go from one diamond to the next, you've gone a quarter of a mile. Add them up, you can figure out how much of a hike you've done. Then the other thing that I want to tell you is, we have about five hundred members in Trax. Now, not everybody turns in their volunteer hours, but a lot of them do. And so we collect how many hours did people work, and that same amount of money is worth, you know, each hour. So there were eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-four hours turned in by Trax volunteers on non-trail work, any kind of volunteering, and the value of that is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Add those two figures together. Trax has given our community, and sometimes Phoenix and Tucson and other places where people live and volunteer, a total of three hundred, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Pretty sizable amount for people having a good time volunteering, and volunteering is the best thing to do. So I hope that sometime you'll have a chance to hike our trails and maybe ride your bike, however you would like to enjoy our beautiful White Mountains. If you want more information about Trax, you can Google Trax White Mountains. Now, does anybody have any questions? I see some nice smiles, but I hope that I'll see you out on the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Krigbaum. Item D3, Consider the Approval of Resolution Number 2022-1604, approving the ground lease agreement between the Town of Pintop Lakeside and Cellular, one of the installation, construction, and operation of a communications facility. Public Works Director Matt Patterson will be present.
Good evening, mayor and council in Mayak. I'm excited to be part of this tonight. This is pretty cool. I think I'll do a little background of how we got here. In spring of 2020, the Cell One approached us on a tower to put at Mountain Meadow. At that point, we dove into the town code and came up with Chapter Seventeen is the community, or is the wireless communication facilities. At that point, we knew that there was going to be a conditional use permit for the new wireless communication facility. A variance was also going to be required, and both of those were conducted. On June 25th, 2020, letters were sent, or previous to that, letters were sent out to all the homeowners three hundred feet within the area. The approval of the conditional use permit for the proposed communications facility at Mountain Meadow complex was passed at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, Commission Meeting on June 25th. Recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Board of Adjustments was to additional height of eighty foot for the tower, the communication tower. July 2nd, which is the Board of Adjustments, as you guys all well, as council members, this came back to you. And at that Board of Adjustments meeting, we heard from the public, we also brought multiple different locations to you. There was four different locations that were proposed. We worked with the public on determining which one was in the best interest of everybody. Choice was made to locate the tower behind the bathrooms at Mountain Meadow to the east, and the variance was passed for the hundred-and-eighty-foot tower, which is a hundred feet for the, I think our code is eighty feet. Might have to check that. But anyways, we approved the additional hundred feet of the tower that's above our town code. Negotiations began July 2020 through January of 2022. I worked with Cody and Dennis from Cell One for over a year, and back and forth between the lawyers, and we feel that we have a solid lease agreement for both us and Cellular One to protect both of us. And so that being said, we have finished, completed, and all have agreed to the construction work that will happen out there, the easements, the utility easements, the improvements to access the Cellular One tower, and we are ready for approval on the final legal agreement. And this has come back and forth to you guys a few times, and so at this point, we're down to the final agreement. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Patterson. Are there any questions or comments?
For Councilmember Snitzer, I move that we approve Resolution Number 22-1604, approving the ground lease agreement between the Town of Pintop Lakeside and Cellular One of Northeast Arizona for a fifty-by-fifty portion on parcel 21239002, as needed for the installation, construction, and operation of a communications facility as displayed in Exhibit A and B.
I second the motion for Councilmember Rigbaum. It has been motioned and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item D4, Consider the Approval of Resolution Number 22-1605, approving the purchase of one 2021 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 work truck with equipment. Police Chief Dan Barnes will be present.
Good evening, Mayak members, mayor, vice mayor, and council. In August of last year, council approved or adopted the budget that we're currently in. Part of that budget was the purchase of a new animal control and code enforcement vehicle. The current vehicle that we operate for the police department is about eighteen years old, and it's got about a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. And it currently, you know, it requires a lot of maintenance, or wanting to get that replaced, and so our animal control officer can be more efficient out there in the public. Last year, the automotive industry began to see a shortage in ships to produce vehicles. Because of that, we were notified by Ford and Chevrolet that it's gonna be harder for us to place orders for those vehicles. We started looking around the state with the dealerships to see if anybody had any in-stock vehicles that we could look at purchasing. Courtesy Chevrolet did have a vehicle in stock that fit our needs for that build for our animal control truck. So we worked with them, we got pricing on that, and they provided us a municipal lease purchase option for that vehicle. Understate contract through Courtesy Chevrolet, they offered that vehicle with the outfit for that. It has to come with a box in the back of it for to carry animals and use emergency equipment on it as well to operate out in the field. The total purchase price of that vehicle is fifty-four thousand, four hundred and three dollars. There's gonna be a down payment of fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. And then after the down payment is made, there's gonna be three annual payments of fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents to be paid to ally municipal lease purchase. Those payments will commence in the 2022, 2023 budget for which funds will be appropriated. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
For Councilmember Watson, I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-1605, approving the purchase of one 2021 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 work truck with equipment from Courtesy Chevrolet, down payment amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents with financing through ally municipal lease purchase in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents annually for three years, and authorize the town manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction.
I second the motion for Councilmember Buse.
It has been motioned and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief Barnes, for your service. Item D5, Consideration, Consider Resolution Number 22-1606 and the Item D5, Consider Resolution Number Twenty-Two, Sixteen-O-Six and the Submission of Project for Consideration in FFY, Twenty-Two-One, Arizona Department of Homeland Security. State Department Homeland Security Grant Program, Police Chief Dan Barnes will be present.
Earlier in the year, we submitted a grant to Arizona Department of Homeland Security under the Twenty-Two-One cycle for funding for equipment. What we were looking for in that grant was initially, we were looking to replace two legs of a microwave back hall that run between the police department up to a tower in Pine Top and then back down to Cholopie to our dispatch center. That back hall actually carries our voice analog stuff for our radio systems. When they reviewed the grant, they awarded us half of the amount that I initially put in for, so that would cover the cost of one leg of that back hall. That link that's going to cover that leg is an eleven gigahertz microwave link. It's an upgrade from what's currently on there. The current link is, was installed roughly around two thousand and eight under a separate homeland security grant. That equipment is very out of date now and it's actually suffered several outages over the years, which kept us, at one point, we had about a five to six week outage for our radio system. So that causes a problem out in the field for safety for our officers and safety for the community. So we want to make sure that equipment gets upgraded to newer stuff that can be replaced easier if we do have an outage in this backfire manufacturer. Under the grant, it's going to be for reimbursable funds in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
For Vice Mayor Smith, I moved to adopt and approve Resolution Number Twenty-Two, Sixteen-O-Six, Authorizing Acceptance of a Grant Award under Fiscal Year Twenty-Two-One, State of Arizona Department of Homeland Security Grant Program and State Homeland Security Grant Program, authorizing the chief of police as agent and/or his designee for the Town of Pine Top Lakeside to execute grant documents from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and State Homeland Security Grant Program and authorize the town finance director to accept and distribute funds as necessary.
I second the motion for council member Snitzer. It has been motioned and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. This concludes our business for a night. The meeting is adjourned.